Good morning and welcome to the Lyon County Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Planning Commission meetings are open to the public and members of the public may attend in person and the meetings are also virtual and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Public comment. Lyon County allows the following alternatives for public comment. If you're attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including by dialing star nine from your phone to raise your hand and request to speak for public comment. To unmeet yourself, dial star six. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending an email to sanden gentonan at s gentonan at lion county.org the day prior to the posted meeting date. Be sure to type public comment in the subject line. Written public comments may also be mailed to the Lyon County Community Development Office at 27 South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada, 89447. But all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to be added to the county's website and distributed to the planning commission within 24 hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at Yarrington City Hall, 14 East Goldfield Avenue, Yarrington, Nevada. Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments but may not restrict comments based on viewpoint. Item one is roll call and most of us are here in chambers and John is here by Zoom, so we are all present. Pledge of Allegiance. Michael, would you lead us in the pledge? And just to let you know, the restrooms are over behind that door and you need a pass to get back in. So if you need to use the restroom, please see this lady over here. Okay, item three, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record and to sign and print their name on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. The commission reserves the right to reduce this three minute time limit as well as limit the total time for public comments. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the chair to calendar the matter for a future planning commission meeting. The planning commission will not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The same applies to any public testimony on each agenda item. The chair may reopen public participation at any time during the meeting. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Item four, review and adoption of the agenda. Any comments on that?
I just found one title there. I did to Shannon already.
But I should always save it in our system.
Okay.
Yeah. That's just the way it is. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Ready for a motion?
Our motion to accept the agenda.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. For possible action, approval of minutes. For possible action to approve the minutes from the October 11th, 2022 meeting, 10 October 11, 22, 2022 PC minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Are there comments?
That we adopt the minutes from the October 11th Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, presentation and reading of miscellaneous correspondence. I think we all got all the correspondence on the agenda items. Advisory Board reports. We have all those two. We have nothing additional. Okay, public hearing items. Item 8A for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for a request from Brian Gott for a tentative parcel map to subdivide a 24.81 acre parcel into four parcels, the smallest being five acres located at 9725 Iroquois Trail in Stagecoach, APN 015-761-31 PLZ 2022-186. Louis?
Microphone check. Okay. Thank you for the introduction, Louis Carriola, Senior Planner. Not presenting on this item today. It's been identified that there are existing code enforcement issues on the property. County Manager Haskin worked with the property owner and their representative to request a one month continuance for the hearing for the tentative parcel map. The applicant's going to attempt to resolve all those issues before bringing the land division to the planning commission. So on behalf of the applicant, we are requesting your allowance for a one month continuance.
Okay, do we just, do we need to make a motion and?
Yeah, there has to be a motion to continue the item to the next.
I'll make a motion that we allow for the one month continuance on item 8A.
Second. Second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 8B for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for a zoning map amendment request from AADF Legacy Air Base Incorporated on three parcels totaling 10.26 acres located at 88, 94, and 100 Lakes Boulevard in Dayton from ME Industrial Estates to EMU Employment Mixed Use, APNs 016-363-10, 11, and 12, PLZ 2022-173.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. I do believe the applicant's representatives are also here today, but I will do an introduction and then we'll break and allow the applicant to describe their intended project despite the fact that this is a zoning map amendment hearing. And then we'll come back to staff and the applicant for questions and I can begin now. If this.
Thank you.
Where do I point this?
Okay, sorry. Can you click next slide?
All right, so the requested zone change is for three parcels in Dayton. On the left is our vicinity map showing the location of the parcel south of the Dayton Valley Golf Course. On the right are the three individual parcels. They total 10.26 acres in size and you'll see that they're on that south southeast border of the Dayton Valley airstrip. This aerial view shows that the site is undeveloped. And the existing master plan designation is employment. The surrounding parcels to the east and south are all also employment. You'll note that the airstrip, the bordering master plan designation is public quasi-public. The existing zoning is industrial estate district from the expired development code Title X per the consistency matrix adopted with Title X in 2018, I mean adopted with 20 with Title 15 in 2018. The parcels are subject to light industrial zoning standards. You'll note that the surrounding zoning is all also subject to light industrial standards. The requested zoning amendment is to employment mixed use. Per Chapter 3 of the 2020 Master Plan, employment mixed use is a compatible zoning district with the employment master plan designation. So staff has worked with the applicant on a proposed project for these three parcels. It includes a museum to celebrate specifically World War II era planes and to offer a number of services for not just World War II veterans, but veterans in general and a project that would be open to the public. Part of the project does include, potentially including barracks for some of their veteran attendees to their events. And in working with community development staff, we identified that the existing zoning of light industrial or ME subject to light industrial standards would not permit all of the proposed uses. And that is why the applicants have come forward with this requested zone change to EMU. At this point, I can break and let the applicant describe their intended project, although I would remind the commission that we are here today to review the requested zone change, not the actual project, although I think it's very important to hear the motivation for the zone change.
Good morning. Thank you, Louis, for the introduction and thank you commissioners for being willing to listen to what we have going here. In 2011, Ageless Aviation Dreams Foundation began giving dream flights to veterans in nursing homes, assisted living centers, and retirement centers all over the US free of charge in 1940s World War II biplanes. Since that time, we've given 5,600 flights in 49 states. I'm sorry, Darrell Fisher, President, Legacy Air Base, and Dream Flights. So we, it's been an amazing program. We have volunteer pilots. We're largely a volunteer organization. In 2014, we began thinking about other veterans and we began getting donations of memorabilia that we didn't, we have nothing, no way to display it from our veterans. So we kind of hatched a plan. We started in 2015, so this has been seven years in the making. What we're trying to create is a, an experience for veterans. First of all, we're going to give them dream flights. We have a 1942 Army Jeep. We're going to let them drive the Jeep. The things that are on display, they are going to be not behind ropes. We want fingerprints on them. We want people, veterans, to experience them. So the idea was to create a kind of a replica airbase and invite veterans in for flight days where we would give six or eight free flights to veterans that came in on that particular day in our World War II aircraft. Since what we do is such an experiential thing, we thought, well, how cool would it be to have a, you know, a barracks at some point in time where maybe they came in the night before, they could stay and we have a mess hall and things. So what we're, it's called a museum, but it's really a living, breathing experience for veterans. At the same time, in 2021, last year, we, Dream Flights gave the last, performed the last mission for World War II veterans in history. We took six of our airplanes between August 1st and September 30, and we flew 891 World War II veterans in 47 states. It's called Operation September Freedom. And we have, we want to honor those 891 World War II veterans. So the Legacy Air Base is going to be a place where all of the memorabilia that we have will reside from Operation September Freedom. And there's nothing, there will never be another mission for World War II veterans. And the memorabilia and the honor, we will honor them there for that mission. So we have really a couple of missions. We're going to honor and recognize the World War II veterans from Operation September Freedom. We're going to actively give back in honor veterans free of charge. And we want it to be a place that the greater community can enjoy and use. So it really, it fits three separate missions, really. There's nothing like that, like this in the United States. It just doesn't exist. So I think it's unique to Dayton. I think it's unique to Nevada. And obviously, I'm excited about the opportunity to serve the veterans in yet another way and to be part of the community in a really unique and special way. So that's, that's what we're up to. And the zoning allows us to maximize that potential experience for the community and for the veterans. So with that, Louis, I'll take questions or if you want to. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the procedure is here, but I'm.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
Is this only open for veterans or?
What's that?
Is this open to the public or just for veterans?
It will be open to the public.
For flights?
No. We are only going to be doing veteran flights because we give them free of charge. So there's a lot of places that the public can go and get and buy flights and get flights. There's many, many places around the US to do that. There's no place for veterans to come and get this kind of experience and get a thank you for their service. They've already paid for the flight, so.
How many flights a day do you expect?
We expect to have two or three flight days a month. This is not, it's, it's, it's very expensive. It's very, there's a lot of moving parts. So we'll plan our flight days. What we will do is invite the public out to see the flights and to see the airplanes flying and to be part of honoring the veterans.
Okay, are there any other questions for him? Okay, do we have any public comment on this item? Please write your name down for us and state your name, please.
For the record, Harold Wickham, a resident of 107 Lindbergh Court in Dayton, Nevada. And first of all, I want to thank the chair, the board. Andrew, thank you for all your support on this project. And Rob Pyzel, can't, can't say enough about all the, all he's done. And of course, Shannon, his assistant, who has made my life exponentially easier when it comes to getting across these hurdles. And I just want to say that I am a veteran. I spent 20 years serving the United States Army. I served in six years in Europe, Panama, desert, all over the place. And for me, a project like this, oh, and I'm a volunteer with the organization as well. This project means the world to me because, you know, I hear people say, thank you for your service. And I do get a retirement check. Thank you for the government. But the biggest thing I can think of to thank veterans is something like this, something that's exceptionally meaningful. This will give veterans the opportunity to either relive or their family members to experience what it was really like to eat in a mess hall, to go spend maybe a night in the barracks, get up and go on a mission, flying in an aircraft, especially some of these phenomenal antique aircraft that Darrell and Legacy Air Base has. And not only is it a ride in an airplane, but we'll have working Jeeps out there, motorcycles. We prepared a presentation. I don't know if you got the presentation or not, but it was on a PowerPoint. Either, either way, I think, I think we can, we can describe it enough of what this is going to be. It's, it's a World War II styled airbase where participants, family, friends will have the opportunity to come out and really relive or experience for the first time what it was like to serve, to do something so much bigger than yourself. And so anyway, that's it. I just wanted to say thank you to the committee. Thank you for what you do for our wonderful county and for the state of Nevada.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. I'm doing right now in here.
Is there any other public comment?
I'm Mike Starkey, 313 Yeager in Dayton. I was on the Board of Directors of the Air Park Estates Homeowners Association. No longer am, but during the time of my tenure, this subject of the airbase came up more than once because of the slow drawn out process. And I must say that the support of the board was consistent. And to the best of my knowledge, it still is. So the local community has shown support for this project. And as a member of that committee, I think it should go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Teres Wickham, I live at 107 Lindbergh and I'm the other half of the Wickhams that live in the Dayton Air Park. And we are a dual veteran family. I proudly served as a captain in the United States Air Force Nurse Corps, and I took care of so many veterans in my entire nursing career. And it's wonderful to say thank you for your service to a veteran. You know, they like to hear it, but we need to do more. I mean, if we think back through the history of the United States, this country was founded by a ragtag team of people who decided to stand up for freedom and they are our first veterans. And we are losing the greatest generation just through attrition and time passing. And this is an opportunity to do something more than just say, thank you for your service. I, I mean, I don't personally want to eat sea rations or MREs ever again, but I think it would be a wonderful experience because everyone likes to reminisce with their, with their battle buddies about all the adventures they went on. And this is an opportunity for, for veterans to be able to do that, especially, you know, this state is so military friendly and veteran friendly. We have state veterans homes and we could have veterans experiencing even if we wanted a vintage USO dance like they used to do back in the old days during war times. And I wanted to 100% support this venture in Dayton. I think it's not only good for Dayton, but also for Lyon County and for the state as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Laura Starkey. I live at 313 Yeager Court. I'm currently a member of the Board of Directors of the HOA, Air Park Estates, and serve as the secretary. I would like to encourage you to support the rezoning project for this Legacy Air Base. The Board of Directors has put together a letter supporting the rezoning project. I believe it's something that you've all received. I just wanted to reiterate that we do support it. I think that this would be a great addition to our airport with furthering of the aviation. We all love aviation. That's why we live there. And so another thing that I truly support and is part of my heart is my dad was a World War II vet. He was a naval aviator protecting the east coast of our nation. And I do have some memorabilia that would be able to be contributed to Darrell's museum. I know that this is something, it was something that he didn't really like to talk about a whole lot, so I don't know a whole lot about his experience, but I know that it would honor his memory and be an honor to so many other military. So I am extremely in favor of this project and, and hope that you will please support rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Did you have more to say, Louis? Okay. Does anybody have any questions? No. If not, we're ready for a motion?
Our motion. Based on the aforementioned findings, I move that Lyon County Planning Commission for a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners, request by AADF Legacy Air Base, Inc., Darrell Fisher to change the zoning from ME Industrial Estates to EMU Employment Mixed Use on PLZ-2022-173.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Sign on the motion carries. Item 8C for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for a specific plan and master plan amendment request from Shaller Development LLC, CO, Project One, to change a 24.32 acre parcel, APN 015-371-08, from rural residential to specific plan and to establish the overall HS Estates specific plan boundaries on nine parcels, including the aforementioned parcel located south of US Highway 50 between Caroline Way and Blackhack Road in Stagecoach, APN 015-365-01, 02, 03, and 04, 015-371-05, 06, 07, 08, and 015-451-01, PLZ 2022-185.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. Like the last item, this staff report was drafted by Rob Pyzel. So I did want to offer a little clarification here in the language since Rob isn't here. So I did want to offer a little clarification here in the language since Rob isn't here regarding the introduction of this item. At the Community Advisory Board in Stagecoach, reading through the comments that we received, it looked like there was some confusion over what the actual agendized item is. The request is to add one extra parcel to the existing specific plan designation for what will be nine parcels. So the image you're seeing is a location of the full nine parcels in Stagecoach, south of Highway 50. And this image displays on the east side there in green that the parcel that is being requested to be added to the designation within the master plan of specific plan. That's all we're hearing today. I know the staff report includes a tentative subdivision map. It includes details in the map regarding the type of construction for roads and other associated development standards that are not being heard today. The applicant will be required to come forward with any necessary zone changes for a future subdivision, and most importantly, a tentative subdivision map. At that point, staff would be reviewing the subdivision for compliance with development standards. While I know I'm stating, we're not hearing the tentative subdivision map right now. One thing, for instance, I know was giving people heartburn was the proposition of gravel roads. When staff is going to review a potential tentative subdivision map, we would not be entertaining or permitting that type of standard. So I did want to make sure that while we're, we're going to be voting today that the commission is aware of what we're voting on, and it is simply to add the 24 acres for parcel, 24 plus acres for parcel 015-371-08 into the specific plan, master plan designation. And again, those terms, I think, also cause, cause some consternation at the cab. I did read some of the comments that, that folks were a little confused by the, but, but the fact that both those terms are used interchangeably. And it's because within the master plan, specific plan is a designation. So the proposal here again is simply to change that one parcel from rural residential in the master plan to specific plan. Per chapter 211 of Title 15, this is required to add, to go through a master plan amendment process to add this to the specific plan. It's important to note that all these parcels are commonly owned and contiguous. So from staff's perspective, it was entirely appropriate to make a recommendation of approval of this master plan amendment. I do know the applicant's representative is here. If you'd like him to discuss the contemplated, but not tentative. This is not a tentative subdivision map, just contemplated development plan. So if you'd like to hear details about that, Mr. Rayly is here. If you don't think it's necessary, we of course can hear the vote.
I do have a question. Could you explain to us the, the differences, if there are any, between what's allowable under the two different land use designations?
So the specific plan, land use in the master plan doesn't come with development standards aside from the fact that it requires specific plan designation for amendments in the master plan over 160 acres. So because this parcel is joining a 473 acre existing master plan designation, the addition of these 24 acres to specific plan requires a master plan amendment. So rural residential would have, in, in chapter three, land use of the master plan, rural residential would have complementary zoning districts. They would be five acre, 20 acre minimums, et cetera. Within the specific plan designation, the only real compatible zoning district noted is PUD, but it doesn't imply that a PUD is required. Within a specific plan, in the master plan, development plans that come forward need to include much more detail on compatibility with adjacent properties, with extension of infrastructure, roadways and public utilities. They need to demonstrate connectivity with existing and approved development in the region, or in this case, connectivity to the highway. I, I know the language is confusing. I frankly wish specific plan was called something else in the master plan because even saying it myself, I'm confused a bit. So in summary, no, there aren't specific development standards for specific plan other than the acreage requirement, which requires a master plan amendment to specific plan when it's over 160 acres. In this case, this contiguous parcel is joining a specific plan delineated area that is over 160 acres. I hope that helps.
Does anyone else have questions for Louis? No? Okay. Do we want to hear from the, we can hear from the panel for representing this?
Good morning. For the record, Mike Rayly with Christie Corporation here, representing Shaller Development. I think Louis did a great job kind of summarizing what we're looking at today. I know the comments that we received from the Citizens Advisory Board were referenced to a specific project. When we went to the advisory board last week, in full transparency, we brought kind of a draft of the tentative map and zone change that we planned to move forward with. So we could solicit comments and then we're making revisions to that draft to, to address those comments. So, but right now, this is simply taking that 24.32 acres that's under common ownership and combining it into the specific plan with the, with the other parcels that are already in the specific plan. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I have one. You're talking about septic tanks and, you know, one of the comments that the homeowners associations came up with, that they require a lot of maintenance. And this definitely alleviates all the nitrate. That's a huge amount of nitrate in one given area. Why not put in the sewer system? I know that's money and you're a developer and money, it's a lot.
We're, we're still at the very preliminary stages of, of the design. So we're having our engineering teams is looking at that. We have, obviously, we have to do per test, we have to do geotechnical analysis and that sort of thing. So we're not to a stage yet where we're fully ready to address those specific.
So could we continue this?
Well, that's not what's being considered today. This is just putting some parcel that's in common ownership into the, into the existing specific plan. So all the parcels that are under common ownership would have the same designation. And then we'll come back forward with the zone change in the map.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you. And we'll open it up for public comment. Amanda?
I, yes, Amanda Bernand, B R I N N A N D. And to me, this agenda item, even though it's been clarified, I guess, is still somewhat confusing to me. As I stated, so at the presentation at the advisory board, SH State provided, they displayed a map with 186 lots in the faces of building. They also handed out the maps with the current proposed master plan designations, which I guess this is what all this proposal is, is to change that. And also the existing and proposed zoning, with the proposed zoning being all minimum two acres. And they did say they provided this information to be transparent about what their future proposal was. But what adds to this is the staff report. So the request in the staff report states the applicant is requesting approval of a specific master plan amendment that would allow for a maximum of 186 detached single-family residential units on approximately 497 and a half acres. And on page C, on page 17C of the staff report, the staff response stating it would further the purposes of RR2 zoning. And indeed, the staff response, the amendment is for the most part proposing development that reflects the comments regarding previous applications for development of the subject site, that the site should be developed with a minimum lot of two acres. I don't even know if this statement is accurate. I don't believe this statement is even accurate. Many in the community also stated their desire to keep this zoning at two, five and 20 acre lots. And the phrase stick to the 2010 master plan was heard over and over and over again. But I guess my concern is why is the staff commenting on these lot sizes if it isn't included in this agenda item? So my concerns still revolve around the staff report requests and the responses from the staff. And then there may be something in this agenda or request or whatever, that there's something embedded in this. And I guess I, I do have trust issues and I, with this development, and I still have concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis, could you clarify the question, please?
Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, responding to the chair's question.
Yeah.
I would agree that the information in the staff report might have been confusing. I reviewed the file and the initial submittal by SH State included not just this master plan amendment to add one parcel into the contiguous boundaries of the specific plan. But the application packet included additional information regarding future zone changes and the tentative subdivision maps. I think as a result, Mr. Pyzel felt compelled to be transparent about the long-term intentions for this development or for this site. I can't really say that I necessarily would have included all that information myself in the staff report, but I think the, the intent was to be transparent. Again, the only thing being heard today is the addition of those 24 acres. You will, you will have an opportunity if and when a tentative subdivision map comes forward to review that map, to vote and make your recommendation to the board. Staff will likewise be preparing an entirely separate report during, in which we would review the proposed map to our development standards. That would include connections to public utilities. That would include connections to neighboring properties to have access to the highway, everything you would see typically in a tentative map. So I, I think maybe the, the amount of information initially submitted maybe compelled Mr. Pyzel to include a bit more information that might have been necessary for this item.
So. Thank you. Questions?
Yes, I do, actually. So if we go to approve it, she is correct. It does say plan to allow 186 single-family residential dwelling. I know that we're not supposed to be focused on that.
Sure.
But it is both in that or if we recommend to move it to, you know, next month with rewording.
Uh.
Because the wording in, in what I'm seeing is that we're not only taking that zoning change into effect, we're also saying, yeah, sure, 186 homes. And that's where I think that's where the confusion is, is based on this report right here.
So again, this.
Makes sense.
Andrew Haskin.
Company.
No, no problem. Andrew Haskin, Community Development Record for the Record, County, Enduro County Manager. The zone change is not on the table today and would not be a part of this agenda. They will have to come back for a zone change at some point. If this is not changing the lot sizes currently out there.
But you see where she was talking and that I think is why the, the public is having such a problem with it. And I get that. We would need to amend the wording if we go for the approval, right?
Andrew, I do have. I, I would add that, that the 186 unit count, while we don't have development standards, while we don't have a tentative map, the reason it's included is because it does cap the development potential within the entire 497 acres. And I would point out, 186 homes over 497 acres, you know, it's, is, it's over two acres per unit. So what that does is it caps the number at 186. The applicant is still obligated to bring forward tentative maps. But if they were to propose, for instance, a PUD with multiple uses, if they were to propose denser development that included a unit count over 186, they would not be permitted to move forward because that is what, that's baked in to this continuous contiguous boundary of 497 plus acres specific plan. So I, and I agree with you that the, the language is, is not as clear as it maybe should have been.
Well, and that's why I said, that's where I think that all that confusion is coming from is the wording and so.
And it's, it's in the motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, John.
This is John Castanelli. I, what I would recommend, rather than looking at the proposed motion on page 71, is use the summary on page 69 that removes, that doesn't mention the 186 homes. If that makes sense. It just speaks to the amendment request.
Of the change. Okay.
G'day, John.
Staff concurs. And the 186 unit cap would still be in our record here.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have questions? Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, we are ready for a motion. Who's going to be the brave soul?
Okay, go ahead, Sean.
So based on a forementioned findings, the Planning Commission recommends a forward to the Board of County Commissioners for a specific plan and master plan amendment requested from Sheller's Development LLC, Care of Project 1, to change 24.32 acre parcels, APN 015-371-08, from rural residential to specific plan and to establish the overhaul SH Estate specific plan boundaries of nine parcels, including the aforementioned parcels located south of US Highway 50 between Caroline Way and Blackhawk Road and Stagecoach,
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The, the next two items, I'd like to, item 8D and 8E.
You might want to correct the record, Commissioner Christmas.
Oh, did he say no?
I was supposed.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was, yeah, it was six to one. Commissioner Kuzmisky, Kuzmickey opposed. Yes, thank you. Okay, the next two items are both for the Kruger Family Trust. And I kind of like to make the motion that we hear them together and vote on them separately. If that's okay with everybody. Okay. All those in favor of doing that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item 8D, for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for zoning map amendment request for, from Kruger Family Trust to change the zoning from RR2, Second Rural Residential District, two acre minimum to SR 12,000 suburban residential, 12,000 square foot minimum in accordance with the master plan designation of suburban residential on a 40 acre parcel located approximately 13, 35 feet east of US Highway 50 and north of Fort Churchill Road in the Mark Twain Community, Item 8E, for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for tentative subdivision map request from Kruger Family Trust to subdivide a 40 acre parcel into 73 residential lots with a minimum area of 12,000 square feet plus three common area parcels located approximately 13, 35 feet east of US Highway 50 and north of Fort Churchill Road in the Mark Twain Community, Louis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Louis Carriola, Senior Planner.
Yes, we will take a five minute recess. Thank you.
Okay, Louis Carriola, Senior Planner. I did draft the staff reports for the proposed zone change and for the tentative subdivision map. Apologize for the delays. There was some confusion about whether or not I had a staff PowerPoint. I do not because the applicant's representatives from Manhard Consultants are here and they will make a presentation. Their PowerPoint looks very similar to what mine would have been. I will, of course, be available for questions after the presentations or at any other time. Thank you. Unless you had any questions now for me.
Not before we hear anything I don't anyway. So.
I apologize.
Hey, it's a different environment right now.
All right. Good morning. Can you hear me okay through this? I mean, it's all working good. Morning. My name is Karen Downs. I'm with Manhard Consulting here representing the applicant. I'm here with Chris Baker, also from Manhard Consulting, and Lauren Chilston from Headway Transportation. And we're here with the Golden Rock Estates application. Our next slide. Is there a clip?
Doesn't have to be. You just, yeah.
Okay. Next slide. Here's the location of the project. It's southeast of Highway 50 and it's on the north side of Fort Churchill Road. It's a 40 acre parcel. And if you can go to the next slide, what I want to point out is that we're going to talk about this slide in more detail later, but what I want to point out is that it's adjacent to approved developments. Also as part of that location. So to the north is Woodbridge Estates and to the east is a future phase of River Park that's existing and approved. South, uh, River Park, that's, but River Park is south also. All right, next slide. So the existing land use designations, it has a master plan designation of suburban residential. And it's also in the suburban character district. It has an existing RR2T zoning designation, which is not consistent with the existing suburban residential master plan. Right, next slide. Our request today, there's two different items. One is a zoning map amendment from RR2T to SR 12,000 and that'll bring the parcel into conformance with the suburban residential master plan. And then we also have a tentative map before you with 73 single-family residential lots. There's also three common area lots on the tentative map. So next slide. Our first application request and the first item on your agenda is the proposed zoning map amendment that will allow for the proposed 12,000 square foot lots. As I just mentioned, the existing RR2T is incompatible with the existing suburban residential master plan. So the suburban residential master plan generally is described as medium-density residential neighborhoods with suburban housing types. And the master plan policies in general throughout the document, they encourage development in those suburban areas that are served by water and sewer. The master plan also discourages low-density rural development. So this existing RR2T zoning conflicts with those master plan policies. The proposed SR 12,000 zoning map amendment is appropriated this site because it implements those same policies of medium-density residential and to be an area that's served by existing infrastructure. In addition, as you could see in those adjacent approved developments, this complements the adjacent single-family residential development. It matches the surrounding residential lot sizes, similar use, and will improve connectivity through those neighborhoods. So again, this proposed zoning map amendment, it implements the suburban residential master plan and the suburban character district designations within the master plan. Next slide. And then this is the tentative map site plan. Again, the total, it's proposed Golden Rock Estates, 73 lot, single-family residential subdivision. It has been designed to complement those existing and approved residential developments to the northeast and south. It preserves through those common areas 8.93 acres of open space. And it will ultimately, with improvements, reduce the peak flow discharge and also improve the connectivity of the existing road network. We'll get that in a minute. The minimum lot size proposed is 12,000 square feet with that SR 12,000 zoning map amendment. And the average lot size is 14,255 square feet and our proposed density is 1.8 units per acre, which is less than the maximum density of 3.63 units per acre. Let's see, I'll point out from here that the access is from Fort Churchill Road on the south and then would continue continue along through Clear Creek Drive and connect to the adjacent River Park development to the east. You can see on here, there's three common acre parcels. That'll be for the engineered drainage channel to route the existing drainage and then detention basins and open space as well. All right, next slide. So this is the same slide we saw earlier and it's just to demonstrate the adjacent approved development and how this has been designed to connect in. So the roadway network connects as well as water and sewer. All right, next slide. We did have a meeting last week with the Dayton Regional Advisory Board and a couple of issues came up at that meeting regarding traffic. And there were some concerns raised regarding the timing of the signal. So I wanted to go over that with you a little bit. The traffic study for this project that was prepared looked at regional development and it identified a need of this project to pay a pro-rata share of a signal that's to be installed or that's required with another development in the area. So again, with this, as in the staff report, one of the conditions is for this project to pay its pro-rata share of that signal. The current, the existing conditions now and the existing conditions with this project only, not looking at the regional projects, does not warrant a signal on its own. If there are, we can talk more about concerns if there's, if this commission also has concerns with timing, we could talk about those and discuss a new, a different condition, a second condition, anything like that. All right, next slide. Another topic that came up at the Dayton meeting was the master plan designation and a little bit of questioning on the existing zoning and the proposed zoning. So again, I just wanted to reiterate it has the suburban residential master plan and suburban character district, which is intended for this type of development in that location. The existing RR2T zoning is not consistent with the master plan and that the proposed zoning we have the SR 12,000, it does implement the policies for the residential development and is appropriate for the site. And what I included here is just a snip from the master plan that shows that the actual consistent zoning designations go from, they include the SR 12,000. It actually goes all the way down to MFR and residential mixed use also. And then talks about what is intended in the master plan for this site, which is medium-density residential development. With that, I am available for any questions.
Okay, happy to. Thank you. Um, my, my concern is the stoplight issue because that's already such a horrible area. It's already poor service and adding more lots without the traffic signal doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. It seems like something needs to be done with that. So, yeah. Because it it's already very dangerous and my concern is for the public safety in that part.
So again, that this project, there's already anticipated to be a signal there that's required with another project. So the traffic study was designed with a traffic signal there and for this to pay its share.
So you anticipate that it will be in place before any of this is built?
Correct.
So can we condition that, that?
Yes. For the record, Chris Baker, Van Hard Consulting. So that that's an odd. It's a, it's a timing issue, right? So unfortunately, we're, we're kind of have our hands tied a little bit with N dot requirements and N dot standards. And I know a lot of you that were involved in the corridor study and some of the other stuff. It's a frustrating situation to be in, right? And this is an instance where we have a previously approved project, which is significantly further along in the process, right? They're about to record a final map. It has a condition that requires the stoplight to go in place. And then as part, because we would be contributing to the same intersection, only fair that development pay for development. So this development would reimburse, right, or pay their pro-rata share. And and that's completely understandable and fine and we're fine with that condition. The unfortunate situation is independently, this project doesn't trigger the stoplight. So if for some reason the the development that's conditioned stalls, we couldn't put a light in if we wanted to because we don't meet the thresholds. So the only way to really, and I completely understand your situation, right? It's, it's whether or not N dot standard says it's an issue. When you're there, it's a, you you realize that there's a concern, right? So we can't get in a situation where we put a stoplight in and N dot doesn't turn it on, right? Not to mention a 73-unit subdivision really can't carry an entire intersection for a stoplight. So we're kind of in that catch 22. I I completely understand your position. And what we would propose is really the same thing that you see in other developments along this corridor is we have a condition that already says we have to pay for the stoplight for our pro-rata share, but kind of adding a secondary condition that talks about timing. And it's really the same condition that was placed on the Woodbridge project. It's that we would update the traffic study prior to final map recordation to determine if the threshold has been met, right? And then what that does is we don't know what's going to happen in three or four or, you know, years before this map's recorded, but it doesn't put the onus on this development to put it in because it's not warranted, right? But if it for some reason is warranted, then there would be further recommendations at that time. What we do envision is the stoplight will be in. So the condition should read something like if the stoplight is not installed prior to final map of this subdivision, then the the traffic study would have to be updated to determine if this independently warrants a signal. And then we would be completely fine with that. We understand there's a regional issue there and we want to be part of the solution, but independently we, our hands are just tied with with kind of N dots requirements.
Madam Chair, Andrew Haskin, for the record, staff concurs with that, that proposed amendment to the conditions. We feel it would be difficult to require, require that, given that N dot owns the road, the the stoplight be put in before they record. So the proposed condition, I think, meets everybody's intent and still allows.
So we can just add that?
And and we can draft some language real quick if you want.
That would be great. That would be great. Does anybody else have questions?
Just a quick question, clarification on that, on that light. Is N dot already read in on this? I mean, are they, are you actively involved with them with this or is this?
Yeah, Lauren Chilston with Headway Transportation. Who's, who's the traffic engineer who has been in, in obviously in communication with, with N dot.
Okay, that's.
I'll be brief. Good morning, Lauren Chilston, Headway Transportation. N dot is aware of the signalization and the plan. They're reviewing the traffic study for Woodbridge, which has that condition. Furthermore, as part of the corridor study master plan to have a signal there and conduits have been installed under the roadway when it's approved. So we are working with N dot and they're well aware of, of where it sits right now.
Okay, perfect. That's what I was looking for.
So I got a question dealing with the prorata share. How does that mechanism work that, that is the county involved in that percentage going to end up? How, what's the mechanism that, that is engaged at?
The, there would have to be a development agreement between the parties to share cost. So the way it was broken down was done by, in the previously approved project, there was an ADT split of traffic contributing to the future traffic contributing to the intersection and the cost share was broke down by trips per project. And obviously, when you actually.
Why keep landing on us, sorry guys?
Audrey, did you get it? And, and the way, really, when you look at a percentage, this, this development actually is, is only 6% of the trips contributing to that future light. So that, that's why you see it's very difficult for N dot to say this one would need it and very difficult for us to take a condition that says we have to put it in. We do understand there is one plan to go there. It's conditioned with a different project. And then obviously, the, the prorata share would be really based on, on, if the other development puts it in, we have to reimburse them for our share of the, the trips contributing to that.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open it up for public comment. If anyone has public comment on item 8D or 80. See Gonzalez, would you like to comment?
Christopher Gonzalez, for the record. I am a citizen of Dayton. I also would like to, just full disclosure, I am on the Dayton Advisory Board. I'm not here representing them. I'm here representing myself. I just wanted to point out that I, I am in support of the zoning change item. However, I am concerned about the, the light at Fort Churchill and US 50, I use it daily. Even, I just wanted to point out that it is a level service F currently and I know that that isn't the fault of this development and them adding to the problem isn't really their fault either, but I just wanted to state my concerns. If you read the impact study, it does say that currently there's 237 seconds, that's 3.95 minutes wait for each car at peak hours. You get six cars lined up there, that's a half an hour wait, which entices people to make very difficult choices and possibly dangerous maneuvers into the street. While this may not, while this project alone may not warrant a signal, the project alone also does not mitigate the adverse effects of the added traffic. Part of the findings that you guys have before yourselves is that this project will have no adverse impacts or it does provide adequate mitigation of those impacts. I just want to point out that the impact study does basically say that they meet these findings on an assumption that that light will go in before their final map. I am in support of a condition to require that the light is to be put in place at the top, at some point in time before these houses get built that would ensure the safety of the travelers at this intersection come before the development within our community or that the impact study be updated at a certain time to show that mitigations have been put in place or that mitigation should be put in place.
Thank you.
That is all.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. I'd like for us to have a motion on just 8D at this point.
All motion. Based on the aforementioned findings and news of Lyon County Planning Commission for a recommendation of approval to the Lyon County Board of Commissioners for the zoning map amendment request by Kruger Family Trust to change the zoning district from RR2, second world residential district, that's two acre minimum to SR 12,000 suburban residential, 12,000 square foot minimum for a 40-acre parcel in Dayton, APM 016-025-06PLZ-2022-187.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries 7-0. Do we have language for that additional condition for item 8C?
Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant. Madam Chair, yes, we do have some proposed language. It looks like it would be condition 28, which would state if a traffic signal is not installed prior to recordation of a final map, an updated traffic study will be required to determine if a traffic signal is warranted.
Okay, thank you. Is everyone fine with that language? Yes. Okay. And we are ready for a motion on item 8E.
All motion. Based on the aforementioned findings, I move with Lyon County Planning Commission for a recommendation of approval to Lyon County Board of Commissioners for the tentative subdivision map request by Kruger Family Trust for 40-acre parcel in Dayton proposing 73 residential lots and three common area parcels subject to the recommend, the recommended conditions of approval, and the conditions are 1 through 28.
Make sure you clarify that with the additional condition that was, okay.
Yeah, 28 is the new one, which.
It's an additional condition.
Okay.
You made, labeled it 28, yes.
With the proposed language, maybe for 28.
That they'll do a study.
Yeah, you don't need to read the, the proposed language, but just state that it's.
Before the project proceeds forward.
All second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries 7-0.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Recession convene is the Lyon County Public Lands Management Advisory Board. Item nine, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Is there any public comment on public lands management? Seeing none. Item 10, action items. We have none. Item 11, board member comments. Seeing none. Item 12, future agenda items. We have none of those. Item 13, public participation again. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Is there any public comment on public lands? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to reconvene as the Lyon County Planning Commission. Item 14, staff comments and commissioner comments. 14A for possible action staff update on recent county commissioner actions.
Andrew Haskin, interim county manager, for the record. Yeah, so we had a number of items on the last Board of County Commissioners' agenda. The Sierra Range Consultants' conditional use permit was approved. The granite construction conditional use permit was also approved. And we had three zone changes that were also on the board agenda. The RN zone change was approved. The 30-30-50 LLC zone change was approved and the RP zone change was approved. All of those were in silver. And then I do want to let the board know that we will, at the next meeting, RCI will be doing a presentation on the maps from the public lands bill. The board, the Board of County Commissioners had requested that we take a look at at those maps, just to see if there was any possibility of doing kind of a smaller lands bill with just county property that the county was seeking. So we'll be, it'll be for presentation only. There won't be any action taken on it and then well, I'm sure there'll be an agenda item later on.
Does anyone have any questions for Andrew?
Oh, and there's one other thing I would like to do. I'd like to introduce, introduce Bill Roth. Bill is our new senior planner and so just want to welcome him to the team. And I don't know if you'd like to say something?
I'm just really thrilled to be here. It's going to be such a great opportunity for me to develop as a planner, you know, in a new area. And I bring some experience, but I'm really eager to learn from the residents here, the planning commission and the board. So I hope it's, you know, looking for a really great start and I'm excited about it.
Where do you hail from?
So please don't hold it against me. I'm originally from California. But I moved here because it's Nevada. And like I said, I'm really eager to open a new chapter in my life and, and grow with the community here and to listen to the community and learn. So thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Item 15, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic and will not be restricted based on viewpoint. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Is there any additional public comment at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.